Good evening, everyone. I would like to go ahead and call our vice number nine for the supervisor's meeting to order. There is no electronic interrogation. Are you good tonight?
I just.
Oh, you just put it on. Oh, sorry, everybody. So go ahead and start with roll call, please. Mr. Edwards.
Present.
Mr. Catlett.
Present.
Ms. Van Croft, here. Mr. Hodge.
Present.
Chair Robinson.
Here.
Standing board.
Here.
I'm sorry. Very good. Review and adoption of our meeting agenda. Are there any changes? I actually have trouble. It was brought to my attention you can remove item twelve B from our agenda addressing funding currently in funding sheriff's positions. We could also scratch that one. And also, under closed sessions, we will need one of those. This evening, I would like to add item D, continuity of operations pertaining to Mr. Andrew Terry's presentation tonight if needed. So just wanted to add that in there.
Madam Chair, with the removal of the sheriff's business, I would like to remove number seven B and considering those to approve of the January twenty-four supervisor meeting dates, move that to twelve E for the purpose of announcing the details.
All right. Anything else? If not, all are kind of motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve. The agenda is presented.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So next, I would like to welcome Pastor Corey McConville to come up from Henry Methodist Church to lead us tonight our invitation.
Thank you, and first I want to commend the board on allowing us the space and to be here to pray and hold the meeting of prayer. I think that's a wonderful, wonderful thing. Now, as followers of Christ, we hope to be Christ-like, knowing full well we could be nothing like Him, but as we follow His example, we can try to be those who serve and not be here to be served. So again, I'll pray over you guys and how we do that in the car and be when we end after my prayer time. Anyone who wants to join in on Lord's Prayer, we join together on that. So invite anyone here tonight who'd like to do that at the end as well. So now go to the Lord in prayer. God, thank you so much for allowing us to be here, and it's never less than us that we can gather openly and freely in the amazing country that you have blessed us with. And you gave us your Son, Jesus Christ, who in this avid season, as we prepare to celebrate his birth, we are called to open our hearts and minds to each other. And as we look to Christ's example, we look to serve others and not be served ourselves. And we are so grateful for that. And just as the disciples asked Jesus, he topped them to pray, we will now join together in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to say our daily prayer and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And we use not this dedication, but deliver us from evil and the guise of kingdom and our power to do what we're able to do every night. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. So now everyone stand and join in and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have our consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I noticed in the November eighteen twenty-four regulations that Mr. Snee's name is spelled incorrectly in a few places, so just stopping that, I didn't see anything.
Okay.
Just to note that that wasn't correctly spelled in some places.
Okay. We'll get that changed.
But other than that, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda approval.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Absolutely.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, y'all. So now we move on to our public hearing through this evening, and I would like to ask Chief Ron Brown to come forward. This is establishing billing rates for emergency medical transport. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, thank you. So good evening, Madam Chair, the board members, and the chair. And the public, I have a few things I want to add to you guys, just so we can follow.
Okay.
So yeah, we take a look at the guidance I just gave you. We're looking at the top, we go back to October, visited a day of Mr. Wilson with finance, and I wanted to go over some things that I discovered. When we bill for EMS services, there are several different categories that we bill for. So we bill for basic life support emergencies, basic life support non-emergencies. Anything that's considered advanced life support emergency one, advanced life support non-emergency, and advanced life support two. So if we take a look at that top chart, Mr. Wilson with finance gave us a projection based on our current billing rates. Now, what I discovered and the reason why I had this conversation with Mr. Wilson is because in several categories, we do not meet what insurance will automatically pay out for a call, for an emergency medical call. So if you take a look at the bottom chart, for example, if we go to ALS level two, ALS level two, you will see in that column the state's scheduled fee slash Medicare. That's where insurance will pay us out seven hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. If you move over from that same row, we go to a column that says KWC plus minus bros, you can see where we leave a hundred and five dollars and sixty-four cent on the table for every call of that type. Now, the reason why that burdens us so much is because recently we just learned that we're now having in-house pharmacies in which we're going to pay for our own medications. We've already spent a lot of money on security for the stations to protect those controlled substances we will house. So once again, we're pretty much leaving money on the table. Also, if you look at ALS emergency level one, BLS emergency, and our ground knowledge calculations, you can take a look at what the difference is versus the area and what the recommendations are for that. Now, on the same sheet of paper, you see some numbers that are highlighted in green. This is where I met with Mr. Wilson from finance, and we've calculated the annual loss if we don't make these simple adjustments to make us more competitive and at least get the money from insurance payouts that we leave on the table. We're looking at about six, sixty-six thousand two hundred and eight dollars. Now, also, I would like to make note of, to secure properly per DEA, border pharmacy, and FDA standard, it took us twenty-one thousand dollars just to establish our pharmacy. So that's for a safe place for our controlled substances plus the security, a safe place for our drug storage, so our providers can have the drugs they need to restock trucks with at a moment's notice. And also for the annual subscription for the tracking we will need, because we will be subject to random audit and scheduled audit. These numbers here, mind you, run from October two thousand twenty-three to October two thousand four. This is when we started this, in October. So, and this is also based on this year's population, which we see the county is growing. So this number, it would only make sense, correction, if I'm wrong, Mr. Wilson, to grow. So with that being said, I'm asking that we take the appropriate steps to stop leaving this money on the table and recruit of these funds that insurance is willing to pay for the services that we provide.
Okay. Of these calls that are noted, is this volunteer and paid?
So this is just for King William Fire and Emergency Services. So Maga Hit has the right to bill their own rates as well as West Point, considering that we are three separate entities.
If there are any other questions, when you.
What effect date, or you thinking January one?
What's, I'm sorry?
What effect you date?
I would, January one, or as soon as, soon as possible, soon as we can vote.
And we're still passive, correct?
I'm sorry, sir.
We still passive? We don't, we don't take people to court?
No, sir.
If they pay, they pay, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, please.
One of the numbers that you see in here, if you look at the total, the one sixteen, this is in the impact column, that one sixteen and six one, that actually adjusts the total sixty-eight, that's the piece we do not bill because of the social issues, other issues related to the status of the citizens. So that, that is a supplement that the county provides related to this. So that's a number that could be quite hard to get to that number, but it's a large number, it's a large percentage. So there's a lot of services that the county supports, it was something.
Madam Chair, if I may further expand on Mr. Hodge's question, and that is about billing and passing. Section thirty-three dash two, I don't know, Chief, you're planning to get into this, but of the county code says that insurance care will be billed for insured county residents, insured non-residents, they'll, the insurance care will be billed, and if there's a balance, the person owes it. And then exemptions, any person may apply for an exemption for any part not covered by insurance. And then there's the next section is compassionate billing policy. No one will be denied transport because of lack of fund, lack of insurance. And it's, and it's, this is intended to eliminate or minimize out-of-pocket expenses, so that your regulations protect people who just can't afford to pay for it.
Well, if there are any other questions, right, at the moment, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. There are no objections to that. Okay, all right. So with that being said, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing regarding establishing billing rates for emergency medical transport. Sitting with Tom speaking. All right. That being said, I'm close out the public hearing. And are there any other questions for Chief Brown? So I'm guessing you would want a motion to approve this this evening?
Yes.
You can move forward.
I mean, I'll make a motion to approve effective January one.
I think we needed eight in.
Okay.
In the new year, January one twenty-four.
We'll do a roll call, please. Ms. Van Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Catlett?
Aye.
Chair Robinson?
Aye. All right, and Chief, before you step down, I have a quick question.
Yes.
I know this was done by the previous fire chief, I believe, in the past, but do you keep track of, like, the call numbers? I'm sure you do, but do you have them by chance with you? And if you don't, I'm open to hearing them in the January meeting if you have. I'm just curious.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm just curious if you have this.
Okay, yeah, I have a, I have a few, I have some.
I don't want to push on the fact that if you don't have them, then January is time to.
No, I try to keep, keep track of this. Okay, so. Yeah, so year-to-date, for King William Fire and Emergency Station one, that is us, we have an incident count of one thousand one hundred ninety-one incidents. And that's, that's year-to-date. Since July one this year, so I have the six-month report, we have a total of transports, because eighty percent of what we do is EMS, there are two years of mix of other call types. So going on to eighty percent of EMS calls, we have a total of six hundred and eight with four hundred and nine transports. That equates to a transport percentage of sixty-seven point three percent, which is a good number. And I have all county numbers here.
Yeah, if you had the breakdown, that would be great, too.
Okay. So some of, let me point out that I do normally reconcile these numbers with our county interface from the sheriff's office, which give us our actual dispatched information. So the information I have is based on our recording system. So I would like to point out, if the reports are completed within there, these are those numbers. If they have not yet been completed and submitted, they won't be in there. I'm sorry, I'm not prepared for that.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't think you were on the spot.
So I just want to point that out. If we go over to looking at Station two, and we have Station two representation here, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but year-to-date, looking at thirty-four incidents with half of the year before, seventeen incidents, two being transported with eleven point eight percent of transport. Looking at Station three, I don't believe I have representation here, but maybe correct me if I'm incorrect, total account business, four hundred and thirty-three for the year. Half of the year before for this year, total two hundred and sixty-two incidents, one hundred and sixty-nine being transported for a transport of six of forty-five. To this date, we're looking at about fifteen hundred and eighty calls, emergency calls being dispatched, I'm sorry. But again, like I said, I would always like to reconcile these numbers versus what we haven't had to, to make sure we know what is, but, you know, down to, down to the bone, what is, but these numbers will be seen a little bit. Attention upon how information is presented, you know, presented to the system, what calls are being completed.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that, I'm sort of, I'm sort of noted.
How are you personnel?
I'm sorry.
How are you doing on hiring right now?
Right now, so we are, we just hired a title chief who is not started yet. We've also hired a captain, fire captain, who is not started yet. Additionally, we're looking forward to doing a M T slash fire academy coming this new year. We realize that this is a rule setting. So part reason of doing this is because we want to raise our standard of EMS care from being a basic life support minimum to an M T advanced. And what that's going to do is that's going to allow our providers today to give a higher level of care, considering that we have such travel, this, while travel distance to hospitals. So we're going to give our customers, visitors, citizens here better care. So we want to start our own academy this year with a minimum of M T A. Thank you.
We have a presentation. This will bump us to our citizen comment period. I believe we had, how many people found out tonight on screen? Twenty, twenty. Okay, so with that being said, for our vah laws, since there are more than twelve people signed up to speak this evening, your time will be limited to three minutes per speaker. And since it is quite a number of speakers, we're going to be pretty firm with your three minutes, just to be respectful for other people that want to speak and the business items we have for us. So we will go ahead and open this portion up. Elizabeth Sims.
Let me begin by welcoming you. Last time I spoke before this review, not you. So welcome. You know I'm here to talk, that's why, right? So that's why I did this before, so. But let me, let me start with a little bit different manner, okay? I used to be a teacher, taught English.
Is that my fault?
My name is Elizabeth. Jessica, my name is. Okay. And I'm a teacher. Can you please state your district?
District five, okay. I'm sorry. I used to be a teacher, so I have a funny way of doing things, okay? But bear with me, I have a point that I want to make. I want everybody in this room, if you've ever heard of Anika Spence, to raise your hand. Look at that. Yes, lots of you. Well, guess what? To Kill a Mockingbird, it's one of the books that's been banned most in this, yeah, in this country. When I went to teach To Kill a Mockingbird to my ninth grade students in Hanover County in nineteen ninety, I was told I couldn't do it. To Kill a Mockingbird was published in nineteen sixty, and won a Pulitzer in nineteen sixty-one. Gregory Peck won an Oscar in a black and white film in nineteen sixty-two for playing that character. But guess what? In two thousand and sixteen, in the United Kingdom, a survey was produced by a literacy group, a nonprofit literacy group, and the character in fiction that came out as most inspiring in their survey was Anika Spence. In the UK, this is not just England, or Scotland, or Canada, or Australia, the whole UK. That book had quite an impact, and yet, thirty years after its publication, it was still banned in Hanover County. No pornography in that book, there's no sex in that book. The only thing in that book is ideas. Ideas that somebody didn't like. Now, I know that this whole library business began with a handful of people wanting some books pulled up the shelf that they said were dangerous to young people. Well, that's how it begins. The books that we think are bad for kids, and then those same self-righteous people begin to say, oh, these books for adults have pornography. And I don't know what your definition of pornography is, but I know a whole lot of men who looked at Playboy, and they still turned out to be good people. So where's the fine line between telling people what's good for them and telling them what ideas they can't?
Don't go that way. Next is Angela Seaford.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Angela Seaford, I reside in District Two. I'm here to ask you to continue on with our contract with the Comiskey Regional Library. I have been attending several Board of Supervisors meetings, and it is my understanding that the board is concerned with the cost of the annual contract for the library. I've heard talk concerning the possibility of an independent library format. I recently attended a town hall meeting to discuss how the library funding is distributed among the different branches in the regional system. I learned that King William County pays twelve percent of the annual cost for our region. I believe this only accounts for a small amount of our county's budget. I think with the amount of services and resources that we have access to, this is a good and fiscally responsible deal for our residents. The library is a pivotal part of our community. Its benefits are numerous. It helps to keep us connected and informed as a community. The library acts as a beginning preschool for our little ones and a safe place for our teens. We have a solid system in place, and it does not need to be changed. I'm concerned that the board has not been transparent with its residents on this decision. Having told you, hadn't even engaged in talks with the library. Can you really give us all the services we currently have with an independent library? I don't believe we have seen any evidence of this. We deserve to keep the outstanding library and staff that we currently have. In closing, I just ask for you to remember me when making this decision. That will make, it will make a big impact on myself and so many others.
Thank you, Seaford. Next is Leslie Fellows. Miss Fellows?
I'm Leslie Fellows, I'm in the England District. I'd like to start by asking each of you on the board to raise your hands if you currently have a library card and use the library. You're asking us to leave the P R L to save some money. Right now, we pay half of what it would cost for us to go independent. To save money, we're going to lease over half of our benefits, our materials and our services. I ask that you at least make a very educated decision when you, when you make this vote. I ask that even if you have to postpone it from your scheduled time, that you go together as a group, make an appointment with the library staff, let them go over with you all the materials, all the services they offer, so that you know what you're, what you're asking us to give up. And then I ask you to go to King and Queen and do the same, and make a comparison, and ask, is it really worth it for you to take this away from your citizens? Thank you.
Next is Jean Campbell.
Good evening, members of board.
Good evening.
My name is Jean Campbell, and I'm a resident of the Second District, reside at four, four, six, White Oak Land in Miami. And tonight, I am here on behalf of the King William two fifty committee. As many of you are aware, the committee has been diligently planning events to celebrate the two-hundred-fifth anniversary of our nation in two thousand and twenty-six. However, we also have another significant milestone on the horizon. Three-hundredth anniversary of our beloved courthouse just across the way, which, as you know, holds the distinction of being the oldest courthouse in continuous use in the United States. Whenever I travel, I introduce myself, I tell people, believe it or not, some of them have heard of King William.
Still in use.
Pardon?
Still in use.
Still in use, correct, Bill. The upcoming anniversary of our courthouse is a grand occasion. The upcoming anniversary of our courthouse is a grand occasion that warrants a grand and memorable celebration. This historic landmark has been a cornerstone of our community for centuries, serving as a symbol of our county's rich history and heritage. We have planned an event for Saturday, April the 12th next year, which will also mark the 323rd anniversary of the founding of this county. And the committee envisions that they fill with entertaining activities, educational exhibits, reenactments, among other things. And in order to ensure the success of the 300th anniversary celebration, we are seeking financial assistance to help cover the costs associated with organizing and conducting the event. And on behalf of the King William two fifty committee, yes, I'm asking for some money in the amount of $5,000 to cover expenses such as advertising in local newspapers, flyers, banners, T-shirts, programs, memorabilia and other activities that will contribute to making this celebration a truly memorial memorable event. And to date, we have compiled a detailed timeline of historical events in King William County's history that would be distributed to the fourth through the 12th grade students in both King William and West Point schools. We feel it's important to educate our students on the history that surrounds us. So while we are actively fundraising on our own, we have been able to raise approximately $1,400. Your support in helping us commemorate this important milestone in our county's history would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Anne.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Anne Garner and I've lived in the county 52 years and reside in the fifth district. I urge you to continue to let the Pumonkey Regional Library exist. When we first moved here, we did not have any library services. We did not have the bookmobile. It took three years for the bookmobile to finally come. It took years for the Pumonkey Regional Library to come activated. It has been a great asset to this county, all ages from little kids, middle aged, senior citizens and beyond senior citizens. They have done a terrific job and I urge you to please consider that because we will be desperate if we don't have the Pumonkey Regional Library. West Point doesn't have it. We don't have it. We'll be in bad streets. And I definitely want you all to do a long, hard job as a board. And I think to continue to it, but please, I do not want you to give your number as the board that just continues with Pumonkey Regional Library. Thank you for letting me speak.
Brian Salder.
Good evening. I'm Brian Salder from District One. Thank you very much for your time. I just wanted to thank you all so far for your engagement with the audience, listening to the communities who've spoken on the library. I'm just coming back because it's our last time to talk to you before the 31st of December, which is why some people are here. There's what you're sensing, you know, is what you might consider some misinformation or disinformation that's coming your way. It's just a function of a lack of communication from you to us about where things stand. All we know right now is that come 31 December, if the negotiations are not moving forward, then you're going to pull out of PRL. That's what the general community knows. And having had no real updates other than the fact that there's some conversations between county administrator and the other county administrators, we just don't have enough information. So everyone's concerned. That's what you're hearing. You're going to hear more of it. That what we just need to know, are we going to continue to negotiate or pass the 31st of December? Are we going to stay with PRL indefinitely or are we going to go ahead and start pulling out? And if that's the case, and we just like to understand how that's going to work, because what everyone's concerned about, same thing you know you're concerned about, is that we have two functioning libraries that are working at the exact same level we are right now. Because from the community's perspective, we're very thrilled with the service we receive, understanding that there are costs and everything costs money and government is hard and government always has to make choices between priorities and funding is not unlimited. But we all understand that this is about 2% of the total budget. And so we want to make sure that as we spend, make choices and we make these cuts, if we make cuts, that they don't hurt the community and the library, which we all value. So that's why we're all here. We are stakeholders. We're very interested in the outcome. We're concerned that all the other stakeholders are not participating in the process and that lack of participation from us makes us nervous. And that's what we're experiencing. And so we appreciate sometime tonight, if you could provide the community some update and some reassurance that our libraries are going to be well protected for the future. That's all. Thank you very much for your time.
Next is Chelsea Salder.
Good evening. I am Chelsea Salder and I am District One. And I'm also here to speak about the library. I will continue to come to these meetings and speak about the library until I think the community is satisfied that we will be staying with the Pumonkey Regional Library system and continuing the level of service that we currently enjoy with both of our libraries moving forward. I was just wanting to note that the library is not on the agenda for this evening, but I do hope that we will get some kind of update from the board as soon as possible to find out what what is happening going forward so that we know. And I think there's a lot of, well, I am certainly frustrated that there hasn't been communication from the board about that. And I wanted to reiterate the reiterated points I made, I think, back in August, that the staff at the libraries are employed by Pumonkey Regional Library. And if we were to withdraw from that system, we would lose those staff members. We would lose our librarians who are part of our community and part of, you know, an extended family for me. When I go to the library, bring my kids and the librarians know us by name and they have book recommendations. And there's a wealth of knowledge and relationships that we would lose. And I would be very sad to lose those. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joy Washington.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board members. My name is Joy Washington. I reside in the fourth district, being lifelong King William County resident. I was also in the school system as a school librarian for 22 years. And I am, I would like to apologize for appearing as I do. I came directly from exercise class. Otherwise, I'd be. And but it was important for me to come. I don't have any prepared remarks, but I knew that this was probably the last board meeting before the decision would be made regarding the Pumonkey Regional Library. And from an emotional and personal standpoint, the I too, like Ms. Garner, when we were first in the county, we didn't have a library when I was a kid. My mom trucked us to the Hanover Library and those are some of my fondest memories. I, the Pumonkey Library has been a part of my library all of my life. And we finally got a library branch in 1995. I worked there. It was one of my first jobs out of high school. I worked there as a library associate. I worked as a children's programmer and it was a great job to have as a college student that was working and going to school. And then, of course, as a school librarian, I used the resources of the Pumonkey Library all the time. I partnered with them. We had lots of events that brought the school kids into the libraries in the summer. I did programs for them sometimes. And so on a personal level, I feel like the Pumonkey Regional Library is very important for our community and for me. And on a budgetary level, because I know that the stated reason for pulling out of Pumonkey is all about the money and the budget. And that's not my area of expertise and I don't know a lot about county government. But going to the town hall that many people talked about, that we went to last week and reading the documents that have come out, I do not think that you will be able to keep the same level of services with an independent library. And I also feel like that the county might be opening itself up to potential legal troubles because there are laws that govern libraries if you're going to take public funds. And I don't think we can do it without any state funds. And if we do take state funds, then you have to follow certain rules. And so some people who want us to leave, I think, are not very well informed. And I just beg you to please use your conscience and use your intelligence and make decisions that are best for.
Next is Mary Shipman.
Hello, I am Mary Shipman. I live in the second district and I spoke a few times about the library. Tonight, I want to talk about programming, mission and the objective. The mission of the Pumonkey Regional Library's mission is to enhance the quality of life in our communities by producing free access to information, promoting reading enjoyment, nurturing lifelong learning and providing places for people to interact. The objective is the library is a space for all members of our community, all taxpayers, all taxpayers and all people. The library will strive to offer programs on a wide spectrum of opinions and viewpoints, as well as offer programs that appeal to a range of ages and expanding information needs. Programs are an integral component of library service that expand the library's role as a community resource, introduce patients, patrons and non-users to library resources, provide opportunities for lifelong learning, increase the visibility of the library. It's an asset to our community. The cost sharing is the reasons counties enter into regional agreements. The majority of the shared costs for PRL are paid by Hanover County and they provide the highest contribution to PRL due to the population size. As my daughter, you know, my daughter said, I tracked her to Hanover as a child, as I did her brother. We're not going to be able to use the Hanover branches. Where are we going to go for library services? I mean, this is, this is something that's really important to many, many of your residents. PRL allotted $799,608 to collections alone. These are items that King William residents have access to with their PRL cards, regardless of which branch they restored it. This one shared cost is more than the entire rate that the King William County paid for library services to include staff salaries. That's $602,907 this year that we're in. We have a new budget that's come out. It's not much higher. It'll restore our hours because you know I'm going to talk about we spent 52 hours a week. Our library at Upper King William is closed on Friday. West Point Ranch is closed on Tuesday and that's not a good service to our community. The October statistics, King William had 2,265 borrowers. West Point had 1,728 borrowers. Out of our citizens in one month, 4,063 borrowers. This is really a service that our community uses all the time and I think that we need.
Betsy Donahue.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Betsy Donahue. I live in the third district, Mr. Catlett's district. I've lived in Ailin for 40 years and raised my family here. I'm here to talk about the library. At the beginning of these discussions several months ago, Ms. Robinson stated that that the board believes that they can provide an independent library for less cost than the Pumonkey Regional Library. Mr. Catlett was nice enough to bring forward some information at one of the meetings that showed what other counties are paying for their own libraries. And I noted that most of them are about the same as what we're paying, maybe a little bit less, not substantially less. And all of them had fewer resources. So at this point, my question is, so why are we still talking about it? The question's been asked and answered. Can you provide an independent library for cheaper? No. So end of discussion, but apparently here we are. The Library of Virginia showed that they did a cost analysis. If we were to replicate all of the services that we have now on our own, it would be an astronomical cost. Over a million. And, okay, there are a lot of services. Not everybody wants the same book, wants, needs to do the same research. We need a vast array of knowledge. That's what a library does for a community. Provides access to information for the general benefit and education of all of our citizens. Now, does everybody use the library? Well, it was apparent earlier tonight, no, not everybody uses it. I don't use parks and rent, but I'm certainly in favor of a robust budget to provide parks and rent for our community. It's about providing an important community, an important service for our community. And apparently, if we provided a building for the Pumonkey Regional Library, we wouldn't have to pay $33,000 in rent payments. And apparently, West Point has provided their own building. So there's an option there to save some money. But if you, it's not clear to me what happens, but if you go independent, costs will go up, taxes may go up and voter and elections are coming up and voters remember. Thank you.
Next is Don Wagner.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Mrs. Hattenforth. My name is Don Wagner and I live in Bangor district. First of all, I strongly support keeping the Pumonkey Regional Library a system. Other speakers will clearly demonstrate the advantages of doing so. My concern is with the way this board has gone about eliminating the consultant study, designing the site previously approved for a new library and community center and then pulling out the Pumonkey Regional Library system without engaging the constituents of the county who, over the years, have repeatedly expressed through public meetings, surveys and studies their desire for a new library and community center. The systems this county and town of West Point deserve other than this. And as a closing comment, have you and the county administrators met with PRL board members and county administrators of the other counties to negotiate terms and costs for the remaining PRL, for remaining in the PRL? And finally, has the board adopted a 2025 budget? And having had the budget audited as required by the state government, we're nearing the end of the second quarter FY25 budget.
Regional Library system. In the Pumunki Regional Library system, the King William citizens have accessed almost a million books and digital subscriptions that we otherwise would not have access to. The Pumunki Regional Library system has a library board, which is elected, as you know, by the citizens of the counties that are participating, including King William, so to make sure that all books are appropriate and that it's, everything is up to a standard. We want a library that has books for everyone and won't remove books for ideological or political reasons. This is a basic American value of freedom of the press and freedom of speech. If you pull out the Pumunki Regional Library system, the King William citizens will find that they have access to far fewer books and online services, and will learn that the costs of libraries are still going to be approximately just as expensive as they were now, and with fewer services. This will likely make many citizens beyond what you see here angry, and it could hurt the ability of people to get reelected, which I'm sure, you know, everyone here wants to continue to serve and continue to, you know, be good citizens and good representatives for our county. But right now, to my understanding, there is a trigger policy that would remove King William from the Pumunki Regional Library system if an agreement isn't reached by January 1st, 2025. So please change, if necessary, tonight, to make sure that we are not removed from the Pumunki Regional Library system automatically. The county administrator still has more time that she may need to negotiate. We haven't heard anything about, you know, how that's been going, and more time may be needed before, you know, the citizens should be able to learn how everything is going before shutting off negotiations. But anyway, thank you all for your time.
Karen Westermeier.
Good evening. Karen Westermeier, I'm here on the 2nd district. So I'm here to speak to you about my continued support for the PRL system in King William and West Point. I have attended most of the various meetings, have listened, follow-up and read follow-up. It's from this vantage point and that of a lifelong lover of libraries that I address you. After reading through the notes from the December 4th town hall, it is so clear that if we're talking dollars, an independent library makes no sense. It could, it would create much more of a financial burden. In terms of a quality library, an independent library makes no sense. Take King and Queen Library as an example. It is now spending more money for less. Their library is woefully deficient of books and other resources. What a tragedy for a rural community and its men, women, and children. The lack of specificity and facts, as expressed by some board members and other opponents, are in stark contrast to the transparent and well-researched facts of the professionals and supporters who have the knowledge and experience we need. Thoughtfully researched facts must direct this decision to preserve our libraries as they are. Oh, and I forgot one other statement before, when I was speaking about the King and Queen Library. And I wanted to also say that since this whole thing began, there has been a swell of sustained support for the PRL system, as is evidenced tonight and every other time that I've attended. Quality libraries are a core backbone of a community, and as countless have expressed, they are, offer invaluable and irreplaceable support for our minds and our hearts. They are a safe haven for so many. So I'm asking, why wouldn't we want to elevate ourselves rather than narrow ourselves? Diminishing people is not how we contribute to a strong society. I think we can agree that in this world, we need to be a strong nation made up of strong communities. I hope you'll see the wisdom of abandoning this effort, and thank you for your time.
Next is Kitty Cox.
Good evening. I'm having great difficulty hearing anybody speak tonight, and I think it would help if some of y'all would speak in your microphones, too. I'm Kitty Cox, and I've lived in the 2nd district in King William County for 47 years. I am speaking for my husband Jerry and myself as taxpayers, and we are opposed to leaving the Pumunki Regional Library and creating a county library. Last Wednesday night, December 4th, I attended a public town hall meeting to learn more about what's going on about our libraries, and a representative from the Library of Virginia presented a lot of interesting information, and it was very enlightening. The only board member to attend that meeting was Mr. Hodges from the 1st district. In light of the concern your constituents have about leaving the regional library, I would have thought more of you would have been there to hear what the information was and to listen to the concerns of your citizens. There are some things King William citizens should know. I think King William citizens should know that we would be leaving a regional system with vast and varied resources that has served us well for decades in order to create a new library from scratch. There is no way a county library can offer access to number of books and services that we get from the regional system. I believe King William pays roughly $602,000 a year to be a member of the regional system. The cost of being a member has been 2% of the county budget for over 10 years, so that percentage has not changed. If we have a separate library, the Library of Virginia estimates it would cost the county roughly $1,100,100 a year. That is quite a difference. So I think King William citizens should know that if we leave the regional library, their taxes may be going up, and they would still not have the library resources that we have now. Counties receive more state funds if they're part of a regional system. Most of the regional libraries in Virginia are in rural areas because smaller counties cater for to have their own libraries. So in light of the figures I just gave you, your argument that economics is the reason for wanting to leave the regional system just does not make sense to me as a county taxpayer. Also, King William citizens should know that what this board supervisor is proposing is not an independent library. According to the representative from the Library of Virginia, you are proposing a library that would be a separate department of the county government. Also, you're not proposing that the library will have a governing board, I'm sorry, to set policy and manage the budget. Therefore, all of that would fall to the board's supervisory, and that is very concerning to me. This is all out of control. There's nothing to do with this.
Ms. Tacks, thank you so much. Next is Celeste Garrett. Mrs. Celeste Garrett.
Celeste Garrett, I live in District 2. It's been a minute since I've been here. Last time I appeared before this body, I was thanking this body for setting it as a sanctuary county for when the governor, Northam, was going after trying to impose more gun control. That's how long it's been, and that kind of is a demonstration of how important this is to me. I love freedom. I love our King William County Library. My favorite thing about the King William County Library is when there is not a book that I want to, that is not physically there, I can put an order in, and it will be transferred to the King William Library, and they'll let me know when it comes, and I can come right back and get it. We would lose access to that by withdrawing ourselves from the regional system and only having this one library that we could go to, other than, you know, driving far, because we live far from pretty much everyone else, right? I believe that by withdrawing ourselves from this regional system library, we are limiting residents' freedom of access to information, and that is, that is a problem with me. I really hope that this board, this board makes the decision to stay, even if it's a financial decision. Really, please prioritize freedom. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Fran Frymark. I live in the 4th district. Ms. Robinson is my supervisor. You all know how I feel about the library. You've heard me tell you over and over again, please don't leave the Pumunki Regional Library. So tonight, I want to talk to you about the resolution you passed in September establishing a self-imposed deadline of December 31st to negotiate commensurate terms with Hanover and Goochlin, and that if negotiations fail on January 1st of 2025, you will give the requisite two-year notice to withdraw from the regional library. This is the last meeting on your schedule at which you can either tell us that you have decided to cooperate with Hanover and Goochlin and sign the regional agreement, the contract, or, in the interest of good government, extend your deadline for Mrs. Davenport to do her work. And when I say good government, I mean you passed a resolution with the deadline, and either you meet it or you don't. You can change that deadline. It was your choice to impose that deadline. If you choose to do neither of those things, I will assume that you have given Mrs. Davenport an impossible task, in essence, setting her up to fail, and that you have no intention of honoring your stated purpose of transparency and financial responsibility. So I will ask you to be honest with us and tell us why the four of you in districts 2 through 5 are choosing to abandon a decades-long regional library contract that has served King William and our citizens very well. Why should anyone believe you have the best interests of the county at heart after your stonewalling and refusal to accept the facts about the library and how much it costs and will cost if you choose to withdraw from the regional system? If you refuse to handle the library realistically and honestly, how can we trust your decision, any decision that you make? I would tell you that I believe your credibility with this community is on the line, and urge you to, to extend the deadline or tell us that you intend to sign the contract. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Robinson.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Robinson. I live in the 8th district. I'm going to read a statement prepared by SaveTheKWLibrary.org. Since 1941, Pumunki Regional Library has provided public library service to King William County and West Point. There is no reason to change that now. Remaining part of the regional library system is the best use of King William County tax plan. It allows the county to provide high-quality public library service in the most cost-efficient way by sharing costs with Hanover and Goochlin. Leaving the regional library will cost the taxpayers more by creating the need to establish a completely new county library system. It will result in a far smaller library collection of books and other resources and services available to King William citizens. The board supervisor said they want to improve services and lower costs. There is only one way they can do this: stay in the regional library system and move the Upper King William Library into a county-owned building, which will lower costs in the long run, have immediate return on investment by eliminating rent costs, and provide better services with a better facility. For official verifiable public documents that support these statements, you can visit SaveTheKWLibrary.org. Thank you.
Jeanette Wagner.
Okay, we're bringing it again, folks. My name is Jeanette Wagner. I'm from the 5th district, and I'll speak to the issue of the libraries first. We need to stay in. There's no excuse for doing otherwise, and if you get out of it, you can't use the head of the library or anything, you know, in the PRL system. Once you all leave, you know, it's gone. So on that note, I want to say, sort of digress. We live in the upper end of the county. We get, we're getting two newspapers, the Time Water Review and the Times Dispatch. Well, the Times Dispatch decided the people in the upper end were not going to be served anymore. And the upper end, we serve also to deliver papers for the Time Water Review. So we didn't have Times Dispatch. We don't have Time Water Review because when we called them and tried to get them to mail it, they didn't. And when we tried to, you know, talk to them, they weren't responsive, which sort of is like this school. And it's a case where we had paid to the end of the year, and now they have to refund our money, and they have to. So I will say this: it is time for you all to add in, to do what is right, and for you to stay in the library system for the good of the community. Citizens have to be served by government. It's not a giveaway. It's a fact that you need to give the amenities to the citizens so that they can have a life that is comfortable and productive. And it won't be productive if you don't have access to your upper system. And I think my suggestion to you all, and I told Ms. Davenport, we need to put the public notices of public hearings and zoning actions on the county website for people like me that have no access since October, to have that, all that, the public hearing information under public notices on the county website. It doesn't cost to admit because it's there, and you don't have to pay for it. But it's time to start doing what is right. So, thank you very much. into a county-owned building, which will lower costs in the long run, have immediate return on investment by eliminating rent costs and provide better services through a better facility. For official verifiable public documents that support these statements, you can visit SaveTheKWLibrary.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeanette Waidner.
Okay, we're bringing it again, folks. My name is Jeanette Waidner. I'm from the Fifth District. And I'll speak to the issue of the libraries first. We need to stay in. There's no excuse for doing otherwise. And if you get out of it, you can't use the head of the library or anything, you know, in the VRL system. Once you all leave, you know, it's gone. So on that note, I want to say, sort of digress. We live in the upper end of the county. We get, we were getting two newspapers, the Time Water Review and the Times Dispatch. Well, the Times Dispatch decided what the people in the upper end were not going to be serving anymore. And the upper end, we serve also to deliver papers for the Time Water Review. So we didn't have Times Dispatch. We don't have Time Water Review because when we called them and tried to get them to mail it, they didn't. And when we tried to, you know, talk to them, they weren't responsive, which sort of is like this school. And it's a case where we had paid to the end of the year and now they have to refund our money and they have. So I will say this. It is time for you all to add in, to do what is right and for you to stay in the library system for the good of the community. Citizens have to be served by government. It's not a giveaway. It's a fact that you need to give the amenities to the citizens so that they can have a life that is comfortable and productive. And it won't be productive if you don't have access to your water system. And I think my suggestion to you all, and I told Mrs. Davenport, we need to put the public notices of public hearings and zoning actions on the county website for people like me that have no access since October to have that, all that, the public hearing information under public notices on the county website. It doesn't cost to admit because it's there and you don't have to pay for it. But it's time to start doing what is right. So, thank you very much.
Next is Charles Snee.
Good evening, Board. I'm Charles Snee. I live in the Second District. My comments tonight are regards to decision by this board to deny my CUP application at the last meeting for Campground. I applied for Campground CUP. You know, in spite of following the rules of the CUP application process, I've been penalized for doing so. This notebook, as thick as it is, represents all the information that came up in my CUP that is not required. This notebook contains my wetland permit, not required. This notebook required, includes my health department permit, not required for my CUP application. This notebook contains my office of drinking water application, also not required for my CUP. But all this information came up during my CUP application here at my public hearing. The basis of my complaint and request are rooted in the King William County Planning Department's failure to properly and appropriately administer their duties in the processing, reviewing, and presenting of my application, which was started back in February of this year, 10 months ago. The planning department failed to properly communicate to the Virginia Department of Transportation regarding the type of review that the planning department, that I needed as a conceptual review, a conceptual review only, which directly impacted and ended up being a denial of my application because of that main one thing, all right? No communication from the planning department to VDOT. Number two, the planning department failed to communicate and respond to me regarding needed documentation to support my application. I was never given a list of the items needed for my application. And because that list never was created, you all asked me for all the information in this notebook. Number three, the planning department failed to communicate updates from, from me regarding my application to the Board of Supervisors at the July 22nd and November 18th hearing. Moreover, the planning department did not follow King William County planning application procedures for the CUP, but it accepted my application and my payment, $2,500, and placed me on the agenda. The planning department's improper handling of my CUP application directly impacted the outcome of, of the public hearing at the Board of Supervisors meeting. So my complaint is a simple one. The planning department failed to speak with VDOT and say, this is only for a concept review. And so VDOT said, was looking at total site construction drawings for me. My approval came four days after I was taken out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last on the list is Stephen Roy.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Roy from the Second District. Hope you all are doing well. My comments tonight are, I'm asking you, Mr. Catlett, Miss Robinson, Mr. Edwards, or Mr. Hodges, to correct the wrong when you made a motion at your last meeting to deny Mr. Snee's application for a CUP. That was a mistake and I am asking you to correct that tonight and make a motion to rescind that motion. Because the planning department's failure to provide VDOT with the information that was needed for the approval they were requesting is the reason Mr. Snee didn't have that letter for you that you were requiring from the last meeting. But moreover, I want you to consider, I don't know if any of you watched the Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Edwards, you obviously were there, watched the Planning Commission meeting last week. You are, the planning department is clearly treating Mr. Snee and holding him to a different standard than they're holding others. You had a golf club, the golf club submitted a CUP asking, saying they were going to put in a commercial kitchen, a bar, they were going to do special events, all of those things. No requirements, no special permits needed for that approval, no health department approval requested, no health department approval provided, no VDOT information requested, like any of that. And then moreover, none of your planning commissioners asked a single question about any of that. The fact that you're going to have high school students at the golf course with a bar, you would have thought that they'd have asked at least, well, what are you going to do about a liquor license? You have completely held Mr. Snee and grilled him for nine months over things that you're not even asking this other applicant to do. You just let him walk right in. And I'm sorry, that, Mr. Edwards, is discriminatory. Whether intended or not, you're treating somebody different than you're treating another applicant. And I, that is wrong. And you have an opportunity to correct that tonight by rescinding that motion and having that discussion again because Mr. Snee has everything he need. He had everything he needed at that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you to all of our, sorry, y'all. Thank you to all of our speakers this evening.
I know they walked it back to back when people started coming in at the end. So I think that's when Mr. Boyd and Mr. Snee signed up. So it was back there and then they took it up at 6:30 or a little after. I apologize for that, but I did see staff walk it back out there when other people came in and then it was taken up. So I'm sorry. So we are going to go ahead and move on. We have no unfinished business. So we will go up to new business for 12A, discussion of supporting the VRA 500k support agreement. Now I'll ask Mr. Davenport to come through.
Good evening, Board members and Chair Robinson. You should have in the packet that was provided to you, two documents. One is the actual VRA support agreement itself. Another is a draft resolution that was worked on by the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission as well as Mr. Flynn, who reviewed it prior to my providing it to you in the packet. This is an issue that was requested by the Planning District Commission that be brought to the board. They've asked that of all the member jurisdictions, obviously, two of the members of our board, by the Chair Catlett and Mr. Edwards, actually sit on that commission and they were actually present when most of this discussion was going on. But essentially, what is being requested is the MPPDC was asked by the Virginia Resource Authority to ask the member jurisdictions to support this because the VRA established a line of credit at the MPPDC's request to help with the cash flow when there are grants funding projects here in the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission area. The VRA approved a $500,000 line of credit, but it's conditioned on the approval of this support agreement that you have approved by one or more of the jurisdictions that are a member of the commission. Approximately 95% of the grants that the commission receives are reimbursement grants, which means they don't actually receive the funding until they have expended the money and then they have to send invoices or the POs to request reimbursement for those funds. That means that the Planning Commission is actually paying upfront out of their funding that they have and then requesting that money back. With this line of credit, it's going to be easier for cash flow. We're going to be able to fund more projects more quickly because we won't have the limit to the cash that's actually on hand. The order of repayment of this line of credit, if it's approved, would start with grant reimbursements. The information provided by the commission is that generally, those reimbursements are processed within approximately 30 days of the request being submitted. The second would be from the general operating funds of the commission. And then third, and only if the first two fail, would the member jurisdictions be asked to make payments. And you'll see in the support agreement that what we would be agreeing to is paying our pro-rata share or proportion of that $500,000, which would be set based on the number of member jurisdictions that agree to support this. I asked prior to tonight's meeting what the other members of the commission have done. It's my understanding that King and Queen's Board actually passed this with no limitations at all. They're willing to agree to it regardless of how the other jurisdictions act. Middlesex passed and supported this with the condition that other member jurisdictions also agree so that the $500,000 would be spread out amongst multiple jurisdictions. Essex County will be addressing this tomorrow. Tappahannock is addressing it at their town council tonight. I believe West Point has this documented for their summer meeting, which is next week. I was unable to get confirmed information about the status of Gloucester Matthews in Urbana. But to my knowledge, no one has refused to support this. You will notice that the version of the resolution that is before you would be that we agree to support this as long as the other member jurisdictions also do. Because I think that's the fiscally responsible thing for the county to do. But I would recommend that we agree to support it with the resolution drafted that Mr. Flynn has reviewed and activated.
Okay. Any questions or? Anybody else, Mr. Hodges, any question?
What, so there are payments would happen, number one, and then number two. And then three, it could be that each of us would have to pay our portion. What is the most that would be the county's portion of that? If we went a third option.
So that is dependent on how many jurisdictions agree to support this because the $500,000 would be spread equally amongst the number of jurisdictions that agree to support it, which is why my recommendation is that we agree to support it on condition that all jurisdictions do because that would give us the lowest possible number that we would be.
And what's the total number of districts potentially?
500,000.
Yeah, the total districts, the total.
Nine.
Nine, okay.
Six counties and three towns. You said that's our, nobody's opted out on this.
Correct. But you've got quite a few who's not weighed in yet.
Oh, that is correct. I will say that the conversation has been that everyone expects that it will pass. But obviously, until it actually goes before the board or the council, you can't make sure.
The risk for the county would be that state, Virginia State
Essentially, we're a third seat cosigning.
I'm good with the way you, we're.
I agree too. As long as everybody else is all in, I'm okay with that. So, does it need a motion?
Was that your motion, Bill?
It's my motion.
Mr. Hodges. Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Catlett.
Aye.
Miss Faycrone.
Aye.
Chair Robinson.
Aye.
Next up, I would like to ask Mr. Andrew Terry, our Assistant to Emergency Management, come up. We have a discussion of a disaster recovery plan and emergency operations.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to present to you tonight on the updates that I have for the emergency management program for the county. I have four requested actions for you tonight. Listen to updates surrounding the county exercise series for the year, updates surrounding the county's emergency operations plan, and then two resolutions approving the county's pre-disaster recovery plan and continuity operations plan. First, I'd like to provide updates around the exercise series that we did. The exercise series was conducted over four parts, the first of which was conducted at the high school with the three fire EMS companies within the county, the sheriff's office, Hanover Fire EMS, and ambulance assistance as well, and members of the schools. The second of which was a meeting with E-MO on the 6th of November. On the 14th, we had a sheltering table talk with members of the Department of Social Services, the animal shelter, parks and rec, and the Community Connection Department. And then on the 25th, we had a tabletop exercise with the school. In all four parts, there were, it was an objective-based discussion and activities. From that, we developed strengths and areas for improvement based off of those objectives. All of that was then put together into a document that we call the After-Actual Review and Improvement Plan. That has since gone out to the relevant county departments for their implementation. And then there will be changes to the, to the county plans, which are in front of you tonight. As a reminder, the county has several plans that we are currently a part of. The Emergency Operations Plan, the Continuum Operations Plan, and Pre-Disaster Recovery Plan are up for approval tonight. We also are a part of the Middle Peninsula PDC's All-Hazard Mitigation Plan, the Hampton Roads NCI Response Guide, and various other regional, state, and federal plans. So first thing tonight is the Emergency Operations Plan. As a reminder, we use the National Incident Management System and the Incident Command System as our guide. It assigns the title of Director of Emergency Management to the county administrator, which then has responsibilities delegated through the fire chief to myself. And it outlines which departments are responsible for what activities during an EOC application. For plan updates, it is recommended that we update it after following an actual or threatened emergency or a training or exercise. So we just had an exercise, so we have an update to the EOD. Tonight, I have no updates. I'm satisfied with where the Emergency Operations Plan sits unless you have any questions related to that particular document.
I don't have any questions per se.
Okay.
But I do, I do want to say like, thank you for all the time. You and your staff and everybody helped and in the community had some input, you know, helping out as well. But it was a lot you did over the past few months and thank you so much. I appreciate you putting all this together.
I've got a couple more slides to.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the, the Pre-Disaster Recovery Plan, this is the first of the two new documents for you. This establishes a plan for achieving coordinated recovery. So we're in the middle of a, of an incident and we are coming back to the regular state, state operations. This includes citizens and non-governmental organizations from all different sectors. It is flexible. It is flexible, it is scalable, it can be used for any incident, and it's similar organizationally to the emergency operations plan. It keeps the same people working at the same. From this, I have a resolution in front of you to adopt the pre-disaster recovery plan if you are satisfied. So any, any questions surrounding the document? So there's a resolution available for you.
Okay. So if there's no other questions, you want to answer the question on Mr. Terry's resolution?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adopt the pre-disaster recovery plan as presented by Mr. Terry. Resolution twenty-four, right now, it's just dash X X.
Okay.
I'll switch it.
Ms. Bancroft?
Aye.
Mr. Catlett?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Go ahead.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Chair Robinson?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving forward is the county's continuity of operations plan. We started this process in the summer of twenty twenty-three. It deals with four different things: a loss of staff, a loss of space, whether it's inaccessible or heavily impacted, a loss of stuff, so technology, robbery of physical items, the like, and the loss of supply. I do have a statement down here about the document not being subject to FOIA regulations because it is a continuity of government-related matter. There is a resolution in front of you to adopt the plan now if you would like. If you have any questions, I am more than happy to wait on that resolution until after the close session.
And Madam Chair, one comment, as Andrew said, it's the work product, the resolution, is sort of a weird animal. You can't, you'll have to adopt any resolution in public, obviously, but if you do that, if you do that, which I would recommend you do, then under two point two thirty-seven oh five point two sub fourteen, that information remains confidential. Of course, you know, emergency operations plans, the General Assembly recognized really following nine eleven that there are things that have to be kept private for the government to be able to function.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Say, if anybody has any questions, we can do that in close session, and it's definitely on the agenda now or not.
I personally have no question.
Okay.
Would you say, Mr. Cat, if we have questions, we have to go into close session?
He said he didn't have any.
No, that Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-four dash X X or authorize the continuity of operations plan.
No, second.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Catlett?
Aye.
Ms. Bancroft?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Chair Robinson?
Aye.
Thank you. And in my last slide of content for tonight, I wanted to start on the twenty twenty-five starting points. We plan to bring forward to you amended set of bylaws for the local emergency planning committee. As a reminder, this is a community-based committee, bringing together people from all different sectors, so media sector and businesses and our hazardous materials-producing companies all together in a way to better advance the emergency management program. We also look forward to the potential for hosting a CERT basic academy. CERT is a free training that can be provided where citizens can learn about things such as disaster medical operations, basic search and rescue, and several other different critical things to support our county's first responders. And finally, I look forward to engaging with our faith-based community partners, especially as we move forward into sheltering operations. So if anybody has any questions or any further questions, my contact information is up here or I can answer them now from the back.
If you have any questions.
I have my own.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, Mr. Wilson, Director of Miami.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, Mr. Davenport. Over the years, past two or three years, we've heard a lot about COVID spending, ARCA spending, what the county has done with those funds. And as a result of the current year review and audit, we have about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars residual in that fund that I have to obligate for twelve thirty-one. I'm asking for your permission to take a look at the original spending outline and to re-focus those funds for the plan being presented by Mr. Davenport and myself to you as to how we can spend those funds so we do not have to sort of send them back to the county. So we would like, I will start. Given the current outline of the new spending of ARCA, their government's opening up more categories to ARCA, we will sit down and come back to you with a proposal as to whether we're able to spend that money, but I need your permission to re-qualify, obligate those funds away from the current non-spending item that we save. And that's why I'm asking for your permission to, I just had your permission to come back, but I need to re-obligate those funds as open as of twelve thirty-one. So if you're permission, I will do that with the staff.
Okay.
When you, when would you project to present? Your ideas to us. We, we had some ideas and we changed those ideas based on some additional discussions about responsibilities and ADA, et cetera. So we are, we can have a proposal, and we had to go back and take a look at that to take the exposure, so we can get that fairly quickly out of. Yeah, it's just, we don't know at this point, it will be very quickly, that's what I have to say, once we understand the entire scope of it. I know it's an open question, but I do need your approval to go back and recalculate the, the ARCA outline, which I will. And it will, it may be a very general statement toward a category rather than specifics, but I will outline where we think it should go for your. So my, my request tonight is for you to permit me to go and reorient those funds for another talk.
If I could, I think what's important is they have to be obligated to a particular project before December thirty-first of this year. However, they are not required to be spent until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six, which means that we have the opportunity, once we have them obligated to something, to do further research to see if there is a better or more ideal way to spend those funds, and then we can allocate them differently. We just can't have them sitting in an account with no plan as of December thirty-first.
Even to reorient them is a plan based on the current guidelines, right? Many, the governmental guidelines have expanded recently, the last three or four months, given the deadline they're upcoming due for next year. So those, what could be used on residuals? There's, there's a lot of ARCA in Lundy City, and county governments have been moving toward re-oriented and stuff, so that's, that's why I'm asking for your permission to move that forward.
Okay. Thanks, Dan.
I'll make a motion to re-allocate.
One second.
Mr. Edwards did that, and then it's a roll call. Mr. Catlett?
Aye.
Ms. Bancroft?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Chair Robinson?
Aye.
Well, the thing is, I may.
Chair Dan?
In the past two or three months, there's been a lot of discussion about the audit and the Finance Department moving forward with Robinson Farmer to get the audit done. There's been a lot of.
Can, can you maybe get a little of those in mind? Because I think there's some.
Yes, I can. How old is he?
Old, if you have to. I can see you pulling it in a little forward, so you can do that.
All right. So what, what's happened is, I mentioned to you, I think about two months ago, a month and a half ago, I was concerned by us reaching the deadline of APA the fifteenth of the seventh. And the Finance Department has been pushing that, that goal stronger. Along with Robinson and Farmer, I must say they have made quite an effort to bring forward a lot of the topics that we talked about and to have resolutions to, and create resolutions with us in the past month, month and a half. It has been quite quick and energetic. So I have the audit here. It's, it's done. It is complete, right? It is in office farmers quality control. So we have signed the rep letter, we've gone through it, started reviewing it. I got it this morning at eight o'clock, and so we have been through it. But, but everything else that's gone by Robinson's Farmer at this point, they, they did a good job of moving this forward constructively, along with the staff. They, they're, they're very happy about this also. So that's a good thing that we do. Hopefully, it carries forward. There are some items in here related to things we could do better, which we agree with, and I'll say that most of those items you will see, right, as I have talked about previously, they're not new to us. All of a sudden, we're both taking a look at this situation and saying, yes, there are items there, and we have done them toward correcting. And we will start moving toward correction and updating of the policies and procedures to match certain statements now as requested or comments on things we could do a little better. That's, that's a good reason. That's all I have.
Question, if I may?
Yes.
Um, just to say, what would you say your attitude is now with Robinson Farmer?
It's changed.
Are you feeling good?
I'm feeling better, much better.
Okay.
I think they have stepped up dramatically.
Okay.
And some of the discussions we have had have been quite interesting, but they have stepped up, and every time we've asked, asked for assistance or clarification, they've been there, weekends, nights, we may, and they've responded. So I must say, I'm, I'm impressed by this new team.
So you think they're interested in keeping your business?
I, I would, I would say at this point, it's, it's certainly an option, yes.
Okay.
I mean, I'd much rather keep them and provide continuity and go forwards rather than going through, having been through those changes in my career previously. They are painful, so, but at this point, I think if you ask the staff, the staff is also very supportive of what we see, unless something changes right now, I would say instead, unless something happens.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that's a change that takes a lot, so I can say, I mean, it's, it is a change.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is discussion of upgrading EMS cardiac monitors and replacement respirators.
This is very even, the board, Madam Chair, Mr. Davenport. We want to discuss upgrades to our AED package at the fire station. Prior to acting EMS captain, Courtney Crump, to get into it, I just want to point out that in our budget narrative, last several years, it's really that a hundred percent of our real mess recovery goes to upgrade maintenance, mini replacement of our equipment. This year, it is written the same. I do want to point out that as of October of this year, we have surpassed where we were last year as far as our recovery funds. So with that being said, Courtney Crump will present AED and respirator replacement. Thank you.
How did you nail it? Chief said my name's Courtney Crump, I'm the acting county medical services for the county firm. So, well, somebody help me. I don't have any.
You're probably going to need to hold it in white.
Probably, I'm a lot shorter than him.
They're most better, thank you.
All right. Not that one. Oh, okay. So as y'all can see, currently, we have three Lucas monitors. They are cardiac monitors, respirators. We also have two, oh, excuse me, life pack monitors, and we have two Lucas automated CPR devices. Colored in red are the devices that are no longer serviceable by the manufacturer come July first of twenty twenty-five, okay, just because they are too old at this point. We also in our inventory have two Philips Tempest monitors. These monitors come in two different pieces. The bigger piece is the Tempest Pro, it's a cardiac monitor that just collects data with cardiac rhythms and vitals. The smaller one is an electrical therapy box. With this being two different pieces, it increases the amount of funds that we have to use to replace all the, I'm just sorry, y'all. This is for, I'm speaking to y'all, I'm very excited. All right. All right, so this monitor package is separate units causing significant increase in maintenance costs, we do redundancy of new equipment. The smaller box is also not approved by the Food and Drug Administration to be used as an AED, meaning that our basic life support providers cannot use it, can only be used by advanced life support providers, which is a very thin school of our department, is about two percent of our providers. So we have to utilize an extra AED, making this a three-piece component. All right, so what we are asking for is to replace the outdated equipment in these Tempest monitors with four new Life Pack thirty-five monitors and a new Lucas CPR device. With this, we can also get the code stack, which is an online platform that the hospitals are using. So from this device, we can automatically send EKG readings to the hospitals to be read by a cardiologist immediately if there is not an ALS provider on the unit. It also comes with five years of maintenance and service already wrapped up into the price of the monitors. So Stryker is offering us a five-year payment plan, so we would pay over five years for these products at zero percent interest, and we can defer the first payment until the first date of this full year twenty twenty-six, so till July first.
Twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six?
Twenty twenty-five, I'm sorry.
You're fine. I just wanted to make sure you, you're good.
I'm sorry, y'all.
You're okay, don't be sorry.
So just to review, we could pay over five years, locked-in pricing with the twenty twenty-four pricing that is severely discounted with Stryker's end-of-year pricing. Our first payment would be deferred until July of twenty twenty-five. With the discounted pricing that we're getting for the end-of-year pricing, we would get about savings of about sixty thousand dollars. It would upgrade our obsolete monitors that we have that can no longer be serviced as of the first of the, the cup coming in, and it would standardize our equipment because utilizing two different manufacturers is causing confusion between our providers and it increases human error and extremely stressful life saving situations. I'm sorry, I'm really bad at this. Do y'all have any questions for me?
You did great.
Okay. Good. There you're not.
First, first question, just for clarification. So, one in random, is either like January one or July one?
January one, yes.
So it is January one.
It is January one.
Very good. All right, and then we're looking at just. All right. And then we're looking at just reallocating funds from revenue you're bringing in.
Correct. For allocation of funds from our EMS for company.
Does this potentially pose any issues you foresee of items that you have those funds kind of allocated for now for equipment replacement that's on the horizon?
So it's not that they're not usable, they're just not serviceable by the manufacturer. They're still usable.
They are still usable. It's just if anything were to happen to them, they're broken, they're done. They can't, we can't fix them. My name is Trish Siller. I work for Stryker. I'm talking about here. I talk a lot. I won't talk that much, though. So the FDA requires them to be PMed every year, so they have to be run through a no safety inspection. Stryker won't be able to do that, so if anything were to happen, and they were past that useful life, that would be a liability for the county starting to be reversed.
So you're saying that these tests gets done every January one?
It doesn't matter when it's done. When was the last time it was done? It's supposed to be annually.
Right. So did it happen in June? Then it's not gonna happen until June of next year, or when was it? Okay. So it passed inspection two months ago, then it technically would be usable for another ten months. Just not serviceable.
But also the trading price that we're getting for the old units and the Tempest units.
Okay. So you're trading in?
Yes, ma'am. We'll be trading in the old units as well as the Phillips Tempest units. And the trade-in price come January first significantly decreases. It's a cost, it's a cost eighty, it's sixty thousand dollars, and there's still the free payment till July of next year.
Right.
So trading that equipment, we still have equipment on hand until we receive the new equipment?
Oh, and it works, which is shocking. So I've been with Stryker for about ten years. I came from a hospital. But you guys need to keep the equipment until the staff is fully trained on the new equipment, everyone feels comfortable, and then you just FedEx it back to Stryker. The other thing that you're getting is during five years of service rolled into that, so Stryker will maintain the equipment for the county for five years. And that will include an annual PM and decall liability office.
Don't doubt yourself. You did fine.
I've got another question.
Yeah. Do you want to entertain?
I mean, I'll make the mention to real, reallocate their recovered funds to purchase the equipment.
Ms. Baker?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Catlin?
Aye.
Chair Robinson?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have board supervisor meeting dates for January of the.
Yeah. Chair, we removed this from considered as a fact of, with the fact that we want to pass the January dates for the board supervisor meeting, which will be January sixth at six thirty for the organizational meeting. And then January thirteenth, correct, six thirty here at the Crown Building.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We've been set. Thank you.
We still got a whole lot of questions here that are hanging on. And I thought, okay, we're hoping for a response as to what we're saying.
Well, just since she's done last month, she, Ms. Davenport is gonna give an update, so we're moving right to it right now. Davenport, take it away.
Thank you, Chair Robinson. I have a few quick things, and then I will get to the library. Just for public information, it is the holiday season, and I want to make people aware of county schedules. County offices will be closed December twenty fourth, twenty fifth, and twenty sixth for the Christmas holiday. And again, December thirty first and January first for the New Year's holiday. And those are all full days. None of those are half days. The Fire Department asked that I let people know about the Santa runs that are coming up. Station one is doing their Santa run on December twentieth at five thirty. And then also on December twenty first at two and five thirty. West Point is doing their Santa run on the twelfth, excuse me, on the thirteenth. And Mangavik is doing theirs on the twenty second. And as just noted by vote, the next Board of Supervisors meeting will be January sixth, which will be the organizational meeting. This is the last meeting for this calendar year. I would also like to point out that we have a new deputy clerk to the board. Her name is Krista Hazelwood. She is sitting up here in the blue, and this is her very first Board Supervisor meeting. And so I would like everybody to welcome her. We're thankful to have her. She's doing a great job. But I would be remiss if I didn't also thank Ashley Galt, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. But she covered the position and kind of did a dual role between her actual job and helping with the deputy clerk position while the position was vacant. And she's also been doing a lot to help Krista get acclimated and has agreed to continue to do that for a while until Krista feels like she's ready to roll. So although she's not here, I do want, as Galt noted, we appreciate that. Also, I really do want to follow up what Mr. Wilson said about the finance department putting in all hard hours to get the audit done. They absolutely have been working around the clock nights and weekends, emailing, taking phone calls. And it shows in the quality of the work and the fact that we were able to, it looks like, make that twelve fifteen deadline. So I think that's something that should be recognized. Mr. Terry mentioned the CERT training, and I wanted to let the community know that the CERT training is actually currently accepting interest forms from citizens that are interested in participating in that training. There is a form to be filled out on the county website. If you go to the Fire and EMS section of the website, if you have any interest in participating in that. Also, the citizen alert system, which is known as Code Red. Citizens are encouraged to sign up for that alert system. It gives you information about weather notifications and emergency situations in the county. There is a form, again, that's on the county website through the Fire and EMS page that will let you sign up for that information. There is a test that is coming up. They do periodic regular tests, and the next test of that system should be Tuesday, March fourth. And that's connected to the date of the statewide tornado trial. So if you sign up before that, then you should be getting test messages on that day. All right. The thing that I think everybody's been waiting for, the library. I do want to let the public know that negotiations are ongoing with Hanover and Butchland. As a matter of fact, there is a specific proposed contract that has been sent around for people to look at and review. And we have a meeting scheduled for next week to come together and discuss where we go from here with the proposed contract. I would like to say that I shared with several constituents last week, but I want to make it public here, just so everybody can hear. I do think that there's a misconception that if we haven't signed on the dotted line by twelve thirty one that we cease to be a part of the Monkey Regional Library. My belief, and I think the belief of all of board members, is that that's a misinterpretation of what they did when they passed the most recent resolution. And that the intention is that we would not withdraw on twelve thirty one if negotiations are ongoing in good faith. And I can report that as of today, they are. So I just want to put that out there and kind of try to quell some of the concerns. But I also heard a lot of concern about what happens if, for some reason, negotiations fall apart and we do ultimately choose to leave the library. And what that means in terms of operating an independent library. And when I attended the BACO conference, one of the vendors there that I met actually is an organization called Library System Services. Their job and what they do as a company is help localities establish independent library systems. And they've done this across the country, and one of the systems that they established actually is here in Virginia. And I have discussed with them and talked with them about what their services are and how they work. And if we were to get to a point where negotiations fall apart and we decide to move to an independent system, I do think that their information and what they offer in terms of services would be helpful in that they would be able to assist us to establish an independent system if we get to that point. And that's why I'm saying that I think we're gonna get there, but I do want people to know that there is potentially a plan besides just doing nothing. So that's, that's what I'm able to tell you as of today. We are ongoing. There's a contract out there that is being discussed, and I have a meeting next week. Other issues? This was provided to me by VDOT, and is kind of a public service announcement. Overnight travelers for Route thirty and thirty three can expect brief delays crossing the Elton Bridge next week. VDOT is doing some work to install new gutter systems on the movable portion of that bridge. And they will be stopping at a full stop for a minimum of four fifteen-minute intervals, all traffic on that bridge between nine P M on Monday the sixteenth and five A M on Tuesday the seventeenth. If they cannot fully complete their work during that timeframe, they will be doing the same thing on Tuesday during those same hours. So if you frequent that bridge at night, I wanted to let you know that you may be sitting there for a little bit. I also would like to say that Chair Robinson and I had the opportunity on the third of December to tour all of the schools here in King William County and the county school system. We were joined by Dr. Wagner and several different members of the administration, as well as one member of the school board, Ms. Atkins. And I thought it was a great day, very informative, lots of good conversation about the needs of the school system, both in terms of physical facilities, but also offerings in terms of classes and things that they think would be beneficial to students. I really enjoyed it. I appreciated the school offering me the opportunity to do that, and I do look forward to working with them as a partner to do what's best for the children here in the community. And I've already started reaching out and having conversations with Mr. Flynn, who has a lot of contacts in the legislature as well as members of the legislature to talk about options that we might be able to do to help the kids here in King William. The new water tower project is supposed to be finished hopefully in May or June. But the current water tower is supposed to have the American flag replaced before the end of the week. So there should be a new flag flying in King William County before the end of this week. And the last thing I'd like to say to follow up on one of the other citizen comments that was not library-related. I have actually been lucky enough to see the timeline that the King William County two fifty committee put together and is going to be given to the students here in the school system. And I'd just like to say it's very obvious that a lot of hard work went into that. It's very intricate and it's very informative. And I think that it's something that the committee and all the citizens of King William can be proud of. And the last thing I'd like to say is that I would everybody have safe and happy holidays, and I look forward to seeing your library in a year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That now brings us to board supervisors for questions or comment.
I would go with us based on Mr. Campbell. Stacy, I want you to even work with Gene and see if he can bring a presentation about three hundredth anniversary to us. So we can actually take an action on that.
Say that again, Mr. Campbell.
I'm gonna ask you to come do a formal presentation on what you, what you did in public comment.
Okay.
Yep. So we can actually take a look at it. Other than that, say we'll. Congratulations, Chair.
Do you want that on the VA two fifth as well?
No, I'm just asking specifically for the three hundredth anniversary, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And.
It's a little different.
Well, yes, we want to cover that first. Twenty twenty six is off, but I'm not saying we, we may need money for that.
But glad you're here. Look forward to working with you. So get ready. Thanks, everybody, for coming. There's a lot of information that's going out. And this is the last meeting, so everybody was kind of expecting specific information. Hopefully, you got what you were looking for. I think there's a lot of misconception. You know, I've spoken to a lot about it. Especially with the library, as long as we're even talks, that's a whole lot of fun. Right. And other than that, I wish everybody a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and we'll see y'all hopefully back in the year. At the same ground, same, same amount of engagement.
Really, the only thing I've got is wishing everybody a Merry Christmas and a safe. We'll see you next year.
Well, I have to, well, the things that Justin said, and I really appreciate the turnout. I know the library is a sticky issue. I thought we kind of added address to the point that Stacy was gonna negotiate the two to the right to an end. And there wouldn't be any updates during the negotiation process and could negotiate and put it out in front of everybody, so. Anyway, I think we saw that tonight. I hope all of you feel more comfortable about it. And I want to thank the staff for all their hard work and wish everybody a Merry Christmas. We did have one event that we did on Sunday evening, which was our first annual tree lighting ceremony. And we had quite a turn, fair amount of turnout, and we've had seventeen hundred hits on the website as of this evening when we came in here. So we're trying to make this an annual thing for the community to come together and say, hey, Merry Christmas, and celebrate in your own way. We did get a commitment for Virginia Power to come in and help us put it on the next time. They'll help with some of the decorations and whatnot, and we want to expand it a little bit. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well. It was done as a co-op between basically the Chamber of Commerce in West Point, King William, and the EDA. So it went fairly well. And thank you.
Wow, what a year. And I cannot thank you all enough, especially those who do support me for being here. Thank you for your words during the year. I may not get in the writing or by phone call, but I'll run into plenty of people that I see in my district that tell me they're very pleased with the job that we've done. So I want to thank those supporters. I do have some that are in my district that do support me as well, and I appreciate that very much. I'm sorry I was not able to go to the meeting last week for the PRL. I do, I did have a commitment that I will not break. If I have committed to something, I am not going to break it. So I committed to this meeting that happens every month, the first of the month, and I, I went. So I'm sorry I wouldn't, I couldn't be there. I want to address Mr. Schneid's issues. I'm very sympathetic to what he's been through. I had hoped tonight to be able to be able to present a motion for us to reconsider in the light of the complaint that he has filed. Um, and that we also failed us. I'm going to say that, you know, shame on me. I didn't think to state in the ninety-day timeframe that we needed to have a ninety business days instead of ninety calendar days. Had we have stated ninety business days, Mr. Schnee, Mr. Schnee would have had until November the twenty-fifth to present his case to us. At that time, everything that was required of him would have been obtained. Um, I recall the, the vote was because he didn't have everything. Three days later, as I had stated here on this meeting, I knew he would get what he needed, and he did. Had VDOT understood that he didn't need a full construction approval, I have no doubt that he would have gotten his approval from VDOT a lot sooner.
Amen.
So I'm just, yeah, and, and so I would like to make sure that next year we make, in our organization meeting, that we do state that we have um, business days and not calendar days. So I'm hoping that would help a little bit. I'm sorry. I wish I could do more. I wasn't able to make the motion because I was not one to deny. I was not the majority. And I'm so sorry because I really am a proponent of small businesses in this county. And, and I do feel like it is a challenge for small businesses. It seems like they have a lot of work to do just to get their business running. And, you know, I understand that we have to do that, um, but it does seem like things are done on a case-by-case basis. Um, so I, I fully understand how you felt, and I appreciate y'all's comments, and me too, Mr. Flynn. Thank you for speaking up on, on how you feel. And thank you for you all, for the library folks, to continue with your passion about how you feel about the library. Please note, I take everything that you say into consideration. And, um, I do hope that this is going to be an excellent turnout for this county in regards to the library of this county. But thank you for being here. It is very appreciated. And, um, I want to thank Mr. Wilson. My gosh, you and your team have done an amazing job. I am so impressed with what you all have done in such a short period of time, and we could not be more blessed to have you and your team here. Um, I want to thank Ms. Hazelwood also for joining our team. Um, it's mighty great of you to be here the very first night. Thank you. And Sherri, thank you for assisting with her. It's very appreciated. Um, but I, I just appreciate all of you all. I, I love the relationship that I have with you all. I know that I call you all up, and we may not agree, but I really do appreciate the input and the perspective of these board members. And I just, I appreciate every one of you. I really do. And I just want to thank you for being in this with me. And we'll see what next year holds. And Mr. Flynn, thank you again. And I could not be more happy with Stacy's effort as a county supervisor. I'm so thankful for that. So thank you all so much. I want you to have a wonderful, warm and cozy Christmas, and that the holidays are safe and healthy. I COVID again, so I don't wish that on anybody. But thank you so much.
All right, my turn. Um, I do have quite a few things I've dotted down and just to talk about, but first on my list, um, I would like to thank VDOT. I brought an issue back up, and I think it was like fifteen, February of this year. Um, the piece of Route three sixty heading westbound, um, in the Mainland District. Um, please pass along to Mr. McKnight that I appreciate the temporary fix to that lane of traffic. If you frequent to Richmond or Mechanicsville, you'll know what I'm talking about, but they worked on that the other week. So, um, so didn't make it perfect, but made it better. So I appreciate them for addressing that concern. Um, I had on here to thank schools and Dr. Wagner. It was honestly great to walk around and see all the kids, see what they're learning and what they're doing. School tours are always really fun. Um, it was a long day, a lot of walking, but it was great to see the kids and what they're doing and interact with them. And hats off to the principals and staff for welcoming us into their classrooms. Next on my list, um, King William Christmas Dreams. If you all have not heard of that program or seen little Christmas trees around the county in different buildings, it was amazing. Um, my business participates in that. And I was told today the Christmas Dreams program supported one hundred and eighty-six families, and four hundred and fifty-three children are getting a little something extra special under their tree, um, for Christmas. So, um, that's children in both King William as a whole and the town of West Point. So I think that they're growing every year. So hats off to Darlene Chamberlain, Crystal Ho, Jolynn Cooper, Emily Ambrose, Mary Dave, and Jim and Kathy Morrison. So if you see any of those people or know them, like, give them a little bit of an extra thank you this time of year. Um, I attended the Parks and Rec meeting this month, so just wanted to update you guys on that. Um, Ms. Huffman, whenever, a lot of the programs, um, over fifteen hundred people participated in their tree retreat back in October. So that is definitely growing each and every year. Um, two hundred and eighty youth have signed up for basketball, which will start after the holidays. Um, the reindeer run, I think it was a whole one.
It was.
Um, they mentioned to Flair, they know spring soccer registration, June, June sixth, and they're already prepping for the third annual Easter egg hunt. So where we get Santa out of the way, we'll be waiting on the Easter bunny. Um, the Raiders mentioned they were extremely grateful for the schools in the county for allowing football players, the Raiders to be back at King William High School playing on their field. So they were extremely, extremely thankful for that. Um, I also want to thank Pastor Joshua Lewis. He is the pastor at Bruce Loom Church here in the county. If you all know him, he is a wonderful soul. Um, he brought back, you know, the prayer and invocation here. This word did, and I think it was really receptive with, with county. Um, he reached out to me and was like, hey, can I help with this? I know a lot of the different clergy. Can I create a schedule? And I was like, absolutely. Thank you so much. So thank you, Pastor Lewis, if you happen to listen to this or see it. But, um, I appreciate all your help with that, and I hope he will assist with that in twenty twenty-five. Um, mama's done, y'all. Um, this time of year is easy to reflect on things and make goals and resolutions. And, um, I do have one goal that I would like to work on, and I'm hoping my fellow board members could possibly get along and go with me on this. But I know other counties do it. I don't know if we did this in the past or not, so if we did, I apologize. But I would like to see us have a county newsletter and have something that is sent out to the public, um, sign up via email subscription, and have a newsletter that goes out to anybody who wants it to give updates on what's going on in the county, recaps of the board meetings, maybe supervisor comments or things that are near and dear to us, um, distances that are coming, issues the county might be facing. I've heard, I guess throughout the year, that the county needs to do a better job, um, just putting accurate factual information out there for the people. I think we can all agree, if you look at Facebook from time to time, it makes you scratch your head. They just wonder where did that come from? So I would love to try to bridge that gap and make things a little better and a little bit more cohesive with the county as a whole, the board of supervisors, and you all, the public. So, um, I mean, that's gonna maybe get some staff to help me, and, um, we'll see. But it won't happen in January, but that's my goal for like the first quarter of twenty twenty-five. So, um, overall, you know, I echo Ms. Van Proff's a little bit. I've heard that, you know, people feel good about the job we've done. Not everyone, I get that. Um, I know we've had a few hurdles this year to overcome. Um, Mr. Wilson's findings reports previously have proved that, and thank you for all of Phil's hard work. Um, looks like we're heading in the right track now. So good things coming in twenty twenty-five. I believe in my heart, and I feel it. Um, thank you to my board members, fellow board members who entrusted me with being chair this year. Um, it's been a while, they're odd. I will say that, but I have embraced it, and I have enjoyed it. So thank you all for trusting me to do that. And I wish everyone here a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, and we will see you all in twenty twenty-five. So that is all I have. So with that, we do need a closed session.
I'll make a ready motion to convene board meeting in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, code of review section one, other code of review. To consider a private matter regarding board and commission appointments.
So a second?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose. I need a motion to recommit.
Madam Chair, make a motion to recommit the meeting session.
Say.
Second.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Catlett.
Aye.
Ms. Bancroft.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Chair Robinson.
Aye.
Great. Motion to certify that closed meeting.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to certify this meeting.
Okay. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Catlett.
Aye.
Ms. Bancroft.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Chair Robinson.
Aye.
Right? Any action or motions coming out of this session?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, based on the information that we discovered pertaining to the potential appointment to the county finance board and the lack of structure and meeting of that board over the last four years, I'd like to direct staff, um, for our January meeting to develop, develop an ordinance to abolish that.
Mr. Cal, for clarification, if this is an action that the board votes to have staff act on, would you like that for the organizational meeting or the January thirteenth meeting? Which would be a regular meeting?
Would the organization be too quick?
I think for publishing purposes, it would be.
Yeah, okay. Then, say.
Okay.
Thirteen.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Roll call.
Ms. Bancroft.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Catlett.
Aye.
Chair Robinson.
Aye.
Anything else?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to reappoint to the Middle Peninsula Planning District, Ben Edwards and Justin Catlett.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Catlett.
Aye.
Ms. Bancroft.
Aye.
Chair Robinson.
Aye.
All right, Madam Chair, I make a motion to reappoint Tiffany Webb to the Middle Peninsula Northern behavioral health board.
Awesome.
Roll call.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Catlett.
Aye.
Ms. Bancroft.
Aye.
Chair Robinson.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Flynn, this is where.
Yes, and Madam Chair, request a motion to go into closed session, um, pursuant to Virginia Code, section two point two thirty-seven eleven A A, to discuss specific legal matters required on the advice of counsel having to do with certain zoning issues.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Then a second, your time. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I think we're.
So I need a motion to recommit.
I make a motion to recommit.
I second.
Roll call.
Mr. Catlett.
Aye.
Ms. Bancroft.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Chair Robinson.
Aye.
Um, next, any emotions you certify?
I'm making a motion to certify this session.
Roll call.
Ms. Bancroft.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Catlett. Chair Robinson.
Aye.
All right, the action coming out of this session.
A motion to reconsider, a motion to reconsider.
Go ahead, then.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to reconsider the vote taken on eleven eighteen by the board meeting regarding the conditional use permit for Zebulon's ride. Standards may have been inconsistently applied to the various land uses application by staff.
I second that.
Um, let's do a roll call, please.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Catlett.
Aye.
Ms. Bancroft.
Aye.
Chair Robinson.
Aye.
All right, so with that being said, um, I'm now going to back up for discussion, correct, regarding the C U P presented on that evening by Mr. Schnee. Is that a long sentence?
And if it helps, Madam Chair, I can, uh, quickly describe the, the resolution that was before you at November eighteen, and then you might, if there are any changes, conditions that need to be placed, uh, on that. So basically, that, that resolution would have had overnight accommodation include one room in the primary residence currently permitted under bed and breakfast, ten new R B sites, five new primitive campsites, existing detached accessory structure used as two cap, cabin camping units, separate structure referred to as the boat shed used as one cabin camping. Existing campsite comprised of three wooden, uh, structures will be unchanged, food service, bathhouse, daily visitors passes. The request would include a total of ninety-nine visitors and overnight cab, uh, cabin guests, camping guests, and invitees in any combination. Uh, the rest of it just describes, um, sort of the process, really, not the details of the permit. So that's what you, that's what you started with, and that would be the, the motion is back on the floor. Uh, because when you have a motion to reconsider, it's, it's like you didn't act before on that motion. It's now for consideration again. The, the conditions that came to you were those that I just stated. If you have different conditions, you certainly have the freedom to impose those if you choose to approve a conditional use permit, but you would need to state what those additional conditions are, and that would become a part of the resolution.
Understood.
Discussion. Anything else other than what we've already kind of discussed?
I don't know what it's been.
I mean, based on what, I, I will say it's a long night. I'm highly, highly displeased with how this whole thing took place. Um, given that, dealing with conditions and this whole thing, there, there are some conditions that I think ought to be. One being twenty-four-foot total length on A R V or trailer. A additional signage, um, minimal two total ten square foot each that is required to be illuminated at night to be visible, and max occupancy of fifty people per, per day.
Okay. Anything else? Any discussion on that?
I, I guess I, I don't. I'm, I'm a little in favor of the more people. I don't know why the fifty people. I'm not certain what we're looking to get with just fifty people. What is it that you're hoping that does? I don't know.
I'll, well, um, kind of discuss it. I'll put it out there. It's the same consistent argument that's been brought up by everybody that's going to be here to talk about this. Is how you address fifty or a hun- ninety-nine people that choose to drive separately to that point. And you can say it won't happen. You can say there's no possibility of happening. And you can say it won't happen. You can say there's no possibility to happen. You can say that there's no possibility that there's going to be 99 people at that property on any given day, and that's not the plan, but.
He doesn't have space for 99 people.
Theoretically, it's, it's approved, and the ability says we can, but it is what it is. 99 people drive. You're gonna address 99 people driving down that road. With a set speed limit regardless of what, what you can drive on it, but speed limit set at 50 miles an hour per day. These are considerations to take into account what's been brought to our attention by not only Mr. Schnee, but also everybody that is in opposition or in, in approval office.
I mean, I don't know how many people he's ever had there at any one given time. Has he ever had 99, or has he never been 99? Was that just an arbitrary number? I just don't know.
Well, I feel like I'm like Mr. Catlett, I feel like tonight is taking a very different turn of events, and I'm not super happy about certain issues and how this is all comes to light for multiple reasons. Nothing that the applicant has drawn, and that's not where I'm going with that statement. But I feel like now we are trying to kind of compromise or something out. So I'm okay with the suggestions Mr. Catlett has put forward. I kind of I don't think I'm, anyway, I'm, I'm good with Mr. Catlett, just then. I'm not gonna bend on anything else at the moment.
And Madam Chair, members of board, two things. One, if, if Zebulon's Roto, if you approve, if you approve it tonight, let's say 50, and then two, three years from now, if things have developed and 99 somehow becomes appropriate, just apply for an amendment to the CUP.
Yep.
And then you have, and you, you know, you got a track record to build it on, that kind of thing. Or, and of course, you know, maybe might vote it down at that point. That's okay. And the other thing is on the signage, if I could maybe clarify a little bit, if I understand it, is directional signage, because the concern, the specific concern the board had was people going beyond the entrance to Zebulon's Roto down to the neighboring properties and turning around.
But it needs to be wide enough. Justin said he wanted it wide enough, and very obviously has to comply with sign ordinance, of course. But, you know.
Yeah. I mean, it'll have been
So Madam Chair, that's a, that's a motion. You had this resolution before you, but it's a motion. That's really a meaning that are, it's to enact the CUP with those amendments. I think that would be the full motion to approve the CUP with the amendments that I just announced.
Well, I mean, I put out these. The assumption was it was for discussion, but if not, I can make a motion for the approval with these as per my present.
And then, and then, and then you have discussion on that motion, because then you have motion before.
With those stipulations, Mr. Catlett was in fact. I have a second. I'm sorry. We have a second. Um, we'll do roll call, please. Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Catlett?
Aye.
Ms. Bancroft?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Chair Robinson?
Aye.
All right.
I'll make a motion to a.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.